Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 21st, 2022, and I would ask that we all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight is where we gather in the face of a world that is experiencing most troubling times, and the world is rampant with rumors and suggestions and charges and countercharges that part of us is going to go to war, or be invaded, or rebuked, or whatever they all think that seem to think they're going to do. Means to say, we are ever concerned about this troubling, mindful issue that's not within in near our community, thank goodness, but it's in the world, and will be something that inevitably will involve, I'm sure, men and women from our community who may be pressed into this military action. So we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon those folks and everybody else from the United States of America, who may be called into a very troubling moment here in the very near term. And we just ask for faithfulness and guidance and true understanding as we work our way through this, and hopefully, we will avoid the terrors of a real bad war that some people think we are about to experience. Tonight also, we ask for guidance and direction to the city council as they go about making the decisions and the discussions that they're going to have about the issues before us. And we know that in each one's heart and mind, they are here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of our community and the world around us. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are suffering or inflicted with some type of disease, from the COVID to cancer to other issues that may be followed upon them, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. And we finally, we ask for understanding and direction for the city council and our city officers to work together and to show the world that we can produce a nice community and maintain it, and hopefully, that the spirit of Batavia is alive and well, and that many of the goodnesses and kindnesses that surround our town on a regular basis can be viewed and observed and emulated by others who live in such less, who live in more threatening environments as we go forward. So tonight, we ask for direction and understanding, and a special blessing on our world because of the troubling aspects that now are within it. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Alderman Serrone, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chantet. Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serrone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Thirteen present of fourteen, your honor.
So we have thirteen present and one absent, is that what you just said?
Thirteen present, one absent.
Very good, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item four is the meeting reminder that we ask if you're going to address the city council, that you please speak into the microphone so that it can be properly recorded and rebroadcast by BATV, which is recording tonight's meeting. Now, item number five is items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything?
No, sir.
It's not, okay. Moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, as the government services chairman, would you present this, please?
He's not present.
What?
He is not present.
Oh, he is not, he's the one missing. Oh. Who's the vice chair? Can't remember.
That's me, your honor.
Go ahead, please.
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes from November 30th, 2021, and December 14th, 2021; the plan commission minutes from October 6th, 2021, December 1st, 2021, and January 19th, 2022; historic preservation commission from November 22nd, 2021; and the building reports from January 2022. And for approval: February 18th, 2022 payroll in the amount of $1,062,145.61; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,669,224.72; the city council minutes for February 2nd, 2022; ordinance 22-7 annexing properties on Evergreen Drive, Roberts Lane, and Walnut Street; ordinance 22-8 extinguishing and access easement on the former Baptist Church property; ordinance 22-9 authorizing the sale of excess land at the southeast, southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street by solicitation of bids; resolution 22-31-R authorizing execution of addendum number one to task order number 13 with Allen and Peppa Architects for additional professional architecture and engineering services related to government center remodeling project in the amount of $9,000; resolution 22-24-R abatement of $399,124 from the 2013 $9,120,000 refunding of general obligation bonds; resolution 22-25-R abatement of $1,495,050 from the 2015 $22,570,000 refunding of general obligation bonds; resolution 22-26-R abatement of $408,706 from the 2017 $6 million general obligation bonds; resolution 22-27-R abatement of $692,850 from the 2019 $3,190,000 refunding of GO bonds; resolution 22-28-R abatement of $257,000 from the 2020 $4 million GO bonds; resolution 22-20-R authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with King County for the administration of raffle permits. And your honor, if there's no discussion, I would move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented, any discussion?
I don't, this is not discussion, but I just want to share an experience I had last week. I was, as you know, I go to a lot of meetings involving the regional mayors, and there was a meeting I was at, and I'm not going to name names of who it was, but two of the mayors at the meeting said that this would be the third year in a row that their financial conditions in their town are so rough that they've had to forego any refunding of any of the bonds and have to let it all go to property taxes. So I listened, I listened to this list that Alderman Beck has just read, and I really want to publicly thank our finance department and our city administrator for a really great job of keeping track of all the money and making sure it's all invested properly, and that we're all doing everything totally to what we should do. And there's a lot of cities, I think there's more than the two that talked the other day that are in this same rough road, and Batavia should be very, feeling very good about itself as far as its financial management of its assets here. As I've talked to several other mayors who are telling me where they, where they've had to go with their tax rates this year, because that was the only place they could find the money to, to fund some things that they had obligated themselves to, and those tax rates were going to be, you know, our 73 cents looks like a penny waiting for change in comparison to what some of these other towns are going to have to ask their taxpayers to pay. So I'm not, I don't think I'm bragging here, I'm just talking reality, but Batavia is very fortunate to have the financial picture that we have here at the moment. And from everything I'm hearing, we should really keep our eyes open, because there's going to be some challenges, I think, to the whole financial picture, not necessarily for Batavia per se, but for the whole region, as to where the money's going to come from for paying for a bunch of stuff. And so, it's going to be an interesting year ahead, because there is going to be some folks that are really going to start feeling it in the pocketbook, if nothing else, as to how they're going to be able to pay their bills. And Batavia's one of those fortunate that we don't have that pain at the moment, so I appreciate that very much. Okay, I gave them a little speech, I guess it asks the city clerk to call the roll on the consent agenda as presented.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, no nos, one absent.
I was skipped there, Malay's an aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Malay, aye.
Thirteen yes, no nos, one absent.
Okay, the vote is approved, thirteen yes, no nos, one absent. All right, moving to item number seven, there's matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I don't see any public, per se, here.
We don't have anyone online.
As long as we're talking about people, I'd like to reintroduce Alice Febré, who is the report, new reporter back again in Batavia for the Daily Herald. And she's, I guess, is your first meeting with us tonight? She's been here before, so she kind of recognizes the interior of the place, but I welcome her and wish you many, hopefully, nice years of working with us and the days ahead, because I know you are a very highly thought of reporter in the region, and Batavia's truly fortunate to have you covering us and helping us spread the word about ourselves or the issues that are before us, so, thank you very much. All right, moving then to item number eight, which is the Main Street Report. Do we have somebody from Main Street online?
Yes, we do, we've got Beth Walker with us here online.
Beth?
Hi. So things are going well at Main Street, we're in the middle of our planning of our event season, and I want to give a special thank you to the city, we've really been enjoying using the online special event application, it's really sped things along, so it's worked out really great. And our volunteer ask for the 2022 season is on our Main Street Downtown Batavia website. We had our juring meeting for the 2022 Board Workshop tenants, and all ten have been selected, those will be released within the week, we're waiting on a couple things before we make that. The downtown kiosk project is in, is going forward right now, Mark Adams is working on the kiosk, I had a chance to see the center windmill, that'll be at the top, and it looks really great. We're working with Anderson Design to create a new downtown directory that will be on maps, as well as in that kiosk. The River Street Shed project has been going well, the high schoolers are currently working on that. And we will be doing some board workshop maintenance soon, so does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Beth?
Sarah.
Sarah does.
Hi.
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you for your update, I just wanted to go back, the high schoolers are helping on what project?
The North River Street Shed project, we're going to have the shed placed for the farmer's market, storage, and other items, and their building trades department is working on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to throw one thing out, I've already done this on my weekly report to the community, I believe it was two weeks ago, but one of the things we had to do because of some structural issues that were apparently impacting it, is we had to remove the bulldog from out in front of City Hall. And that bulldog is a very popular artifact in downtown Batavia, and I gotta believe almost every small child in this town has climbed on its back and sat there and had his picture taken, or her picture taken. And the staff discovered the, a couple weeks ago, that there were some cracks in the bottom of it, and that they needed to be replaced, they got ahold of the company that built them, and Scott Haynes and Bill Kellum, I believe, were the two from the city who, you know, handle public property, so they got the guy over here, and he says, yeah, we should probably do it sooner than later, because if we let this thing go much longer through another heavy summer of visitations of riders, we're liable to start to have some breakdown on this thing. So they dismantled it from its base a couple weeks ago, and loaded it on a truck, and it was hauled off to the manufacturer, and he's in the process now of restructuring it and reinforcing it through some compounds he's putting down in underneath it and whatever have you, and so I'm told it will return and, you know, maybe spruced up a little bit, but it'll be the same bulldog we've had there for several years now, and I know, I, the minute it happened, I had people calling up here wanting to know, had somebody stolen the bulldog? And, you know, it's one of those things that's become part of us, and so we want everybody to know the bulldog's okay, it's just being boosted a little bit and repaired, and it should be in here by beginning of the summer, so I'm told, and there will be no, won't miss much. But the bulldog is here, and I was recently talking to the mayor of Harvard, and he has a similar thing in his town, he's got a cow, it sits right at the head of the Main Street in downtown Harvard, and he says, it's phenomenal the number of people that show up in Harvard and want to get their kids out or grandpa out and have them stand by the cow. It's standing in front of, I think it's the north end of the downtown, right, and they had it in the middle of the street, and now they, I dot had some issues with that, so they, they put a, they got a pad from some little building that was tore down, and they've moved it over and put a background to it and everything else, because supposedly Harvard was the milk capital of Illinois for a while, they had more milk producers there than anyplace else. So everybody's got their own little thing going with these statues, but it's nice to have one in your town, because it really does create a nice symbol of what the town's all about, so, just wanted to share with you the status of the cow, or the bulldog, and he's coming back. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is resolution 22-022-R, authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding the Kane County Bike Sharing Services for 2022. Who's got this?
That's me again, your honor.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Batavia and Kane County that we wish to participate in the Bike Share Program again this year. We've had a two-year contract so far with Colony, and have seen our, our ridership double, double from the first to second year, so this is just a note to them, to let them know that we wish to participate for a third year. It's not a contract until we have a chosen vendor and know how many bikes and whatnot we want to participate with, but this just lets them know that we're in for another year. Any questions? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 22-22-R to authorize this MOU regarding our Bike Share Program.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck and second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of resolution 22-022-R to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding the Kane County Bike Sharing Services for 2022. Any further discussion on that one?
Kirk call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no no, one absent.
Thank you, Alderman Beck.
Resolution 22-022-R is approved, thirteen yes, no nos, one absent.
Thank you, mayor, council.
Okay. Moving to item 10, which is resolution 22-029-R, authorizing execution of a task force, number agreement number 28, with Energy Engineering Enterprises for construction engineering on lead service line replacement project for a fixed fee of $401,904. Who's got this one?
I've got this, your honor. Yes, this is a, a resolution comes to us with a positive recommendation from, from the cow, it is $400,000, but it's provided by the Illinois EPA with a forgivable loan due to their lead service line replacement program, so this is a three-year program that they're working to try to get rid of all the lead pipes, and we have scoured the town and tried to search where it all is, and we have found, what, I think, 203 water services that qualify for full replacement, so we're taking advantage of it, and I recommend, did anybody have any questions or comments?
Just one, I just wanted to thank Jeremy Barki and our water department for all the work that they put into this, because this is really something that needs to be done, we need to be out in front of it, and the fact that there's grant money out there available to pay for this, it's really important that this gets set up and done as soon as possible to make sure we can take advantage of that money from elsewhere to, to help pay for the replacement of this, so it's not all borne by either the city or its residents.
Right.
Laura?
I'd also like to add that while the current contract that you're approving this evening is only $400,000, the amount of the forgivable loans available to do the actual work will total almost $4 million.
It's a huge project, and I think it's really something that I'm glad that, you know, our water department took this so seriously to start with, to try to get this set up and moving forward, to try to attack these as fast as we can.
If I'm not mistaken, it says four million per year for three years, right? So it could go up to 12 million, but we're kind of, will be done after this project, correct, or no?
We can still go for another round, because there are still households that did not respond to the survey, so I believe it is the intention of the water department to do another round of soliciting households that would like to have their lead services replaced.
Perfect. And then, Gary, you were going to look into whether or not staff time can get reimbursed, right? Were you able to find out anything on that?
Thank you, Alderman, yes, I was able, I did ask Jeremy, and Jeremy had already asked to state that very question, and we've been told that no, staff time is not reimbursable.
Makes sense, it was worth a shot, though, thanks.
Absolutely.
With that, I will make a motion to pass resolution 22-029-R, authorizing execution of task order number 28 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for $401,000, or $401,904.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Serrone, second by Alderman Wolf.
Mm-hmm.
For the approval of resolution 22-029-R, execution of the task order number 28 for the Energy Engineering Enterprises for construction of the lead service replacement project for a fixed cost of $401,904.
Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Serrone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no no, one absent.
Resolution 22-029-R is approved, voted thirteen yes, no nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is the administrator's report, Laura?
Sure, last week, Alderman Chantet requested an update for, on our FOIA site for monthly reports of the requests and responses, and in response to that, I met with Information Systems and Ed Larson, utilizing our new LaserFIS software, was able to create an online form for people to use, and he also created routing of that form to the appropriate departments, and then after the film, the form has been completed, it will automatically populate an ongoing report that we can put up on our transparency site, so I'm really happy with the way that Information Systems was able to utilize a software that we had initially purchased in order just to do document management, in order to streamline a process, make it more efficient, both for the people who are requesting information, and then also internally for those who are responding, and then we'll be collecting information such as the amount of time that it took for us to respond to the request in terms of the number of days, but also be able to track our staff time spent responding to FOIA requests, and also attach a cost to that as well, because certainly there is staff time costs associated with responding to FOIAs. We don't receive an extraordinary number of FOIAs, I'd say that predominantly, they are related to police reports that people are seeking copies of, and then also, the other high number are related to properties, that people are investigating whether there are any, or have been any violations in the past, or any permits that have been pulled, or any fire events that might have occurred at those properties. So community and economic development and the police department receive the majority of our FOIA requests. And then just an update on some ongoing community and economic development projects, the Starbucks and Chipotle building foundations have been constructed, and additional site work is underway. And then the Committee of the Whole meeting on March 1st will have items that include an extension to the Larson Becker parking lot variance time limit. We had initially, the city had obtained a variance to the number of parking spaces in that parking lot, and we put a sunset on it at a time when we thought that a project would be completed at the first Baptist church site, but given that we're going, we are going to need additional time to find an alternate project, we're going to come back and seek an extension on that parking lot variance time limit. And the Culvers Conditional Use and Plan Development received approval at the February 16th Plan Commission meeting, and so that also will be on the Committee of the Whole on March 1st. We are fielding a number of inquiries for use of industrial properties for truck trailer repair and storage, and so we anticipate that a large number of those will be moving forward, just seems like a, a type of business that, given things that are happening in the, in the markets for those types of vehicles, that there's a lot more of that type of business that needs to be done. Plan review and comments, I've been sent to Wazio Dental and on Casey's projects as well, and we're working on the RFP for downtown properties, as well as signage to advertise the properties being available for redevelopment, and that is on our Committee of the Whole agenda for tomorrow night to look at that signage, and then very soon we'll have the RFP draft that we can provide to city council for review and comments. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any specific questions for me.
Any questions, Laura, tonight?
Did you want to just cover for a moment, if you can, what happened yesterday on the electric utility, the outage?
Sure, we had an equipment failure that we believe was associated with the high and gusting winds that were up to 55 miles per hour that triggered that power outage. The majority of the initially affected customers were back up and running within one to two hours. There was one industrial customer whose operations are closed on that day who did not get back up and running for three hours.
Okay. I don't know how many of you heard about this from residents in your ward, but it was somewhat scattered almost throughout the town, and it was, you know, it all comes on a Sunday morning, and the only place that really, somebody sitting there answering the phone is up in the police area here by the front desk, and I had some reason to be in here when it all started coming, and I really want to take my hat off to the folks in the police office, because they really got hit with a rash of, many of them were very angry people, and then there was, some people thought that there was some kind of an attack or something going on, on our electric system, fortunately, we knew that wasn't the case, but there was all kinds of suppositions and innuendos and everything else going on about what's really happening here, and it was, and they, our electric department rose up very rapidly and got out and figured out what was going on, and so we knew we, you know, nobody else had done anything, or nobody had come in and cut any wire, or shut anything down, or anything, it was all, we could track it all to the weather of the, in some instances... It was all, we could track it all to the weather of the, in some instances, I guess, yesterday morning, we had a couple 50 mile an hour winds roll through town. And that's going to probably upset a lot of things if the truth be known. So it was just, you know, it was a sunny day, and people were wondering, why is this going out? Why is this doing this? But it was a situation that was occurring. And as generally the case, the City of Batavia staff rose up and took care of it. And, you know, we got it back on. I was, personally, I was somewhat comfortable from the fact that it didn't happen the Sunday before when it was going to be the Super Bowl. And that's one day that you probably politically do not want to have an interruption in TV systems and the electric systems and everything else. So that's one you'd want to avoid by all means. Unfortunately, we missed it by a week, so that was good. All right, going then to 12 committee reports. City Services, report?
Yes, nothing to report at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. Governmental Services, Alderman Beck, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was having trouble with the mute button. No, nothing to report, Your Honor.
Okay. Community Development?
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Public Utilities?
Yes, Your Honor, we've got a few items tomorrow evening to approve. The self-generation interconnection policy, the self-generation and net billing policy. And there is a resolution to, for a change order to replace a Batavia substation.
Okay.
That is it.
And we, yeah, Public Safety, I guess, do we have?
No.
Did I get them all?
Yes, you did.
That's okay. All right. Other business from the Council?
I have one.
All right.
No. Same as last week, the Batavia School District has their session two of their community engagement this Thursday, February 24th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the Batavia Library. This session will focus mostly on financing options and tax implications for the plan. So please get engaged.
And you were on that committee, I'm thinking, or hoping?
Yes.
Well, it's good that we have a direct communication between the City Council and those folks because that is obviously a kind of a partner of ours and the world around us. So thank you for stepping forward and taking that on.
Yeah.
That can be a challenging moment there.
Yeah, what the school district is doing will affect what the city's going to do, and what the city does affects what the school district is going to do. So coming together and having those discussions and getting our citizens engaged and getting those voices so we can come up with the best plan benefits everybody.
Okay. And anybody else have any other business?
Yeah, I'll add, Your Honor, just a reminder, Wednesday, there's a couple opportunities for the Batavia Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Virtual Open House. So if people want to listen in.
Thank you.
There's, I think, one at 11, and I don't know when the evening one is.
Yes, there's one from 11 to 12:30, and the other one is from 7:00 PM to 8:30. And if you'd like to sign up for those, you can find information on the city's website or at bikewalkbatavia.com. Thanks, Alderman Serrano.
Going then, I guess, to the Mayor's Report, and I'm going to keep it hopefully short here. As many of you have heard me talk recently, the Community Development Department under Scott Buneen and myself and several others, we've been looking at the status of some, I'll call them troubled properties that we have in Batavia. And it looks like with the seven wards, we can probably go into every ward and find at least one property that could be defined as troubled. Some of you have more than others, and some of you have hardly any. But there is scattered around out there, and it's not restricted to any one part of town. It's kind of all over the place. And when I say troubled, it's situations where somebody's got their garage door opener broke and has been for probably a year, and it's halfway down to the ground, and nobody can walk into the garage standing up because they have to bend over. But then they, the garage door won't go down the rest of the way. And so, so I'm told by the police and others that, you know, that's the place that a lot of animals go to at night and whatever have you. So you don't know, when you have something like that in your neighborhood, I'm sure your neighbors are not appreciative that you've got a broken garage door hanging there that's not working. Another one would be that we have, you know, people come in and their porches get damaged somehow, and there's, some of the wood starts, starts rotting. And we've got a couple places in town where if you step out the front door of the house, you go right down into a hole, maybe three or four feet deep because the floor on the porch is totally missing. And if somebody wants to come up and ring your doorbell or come to your front door, they really can't get there because there's, there's just a framework around the outside of the porch, and there's no way to get in there. And there's, obviously, there's a few that just have broken down cars that are sitting there with the windows coming out of them, or they're not being maintained, or whatever it be. And I think generally, most people in Batavia take great pride in their property and want to see it maintained and look nice, and that this is not a neighborhood of junk sitting around. And so I guess where I'm going with this is, is that the staff, and I have been talking almost every week now about new properties that emerge out of the ground, so to speak, problematic. And so I think what we're going, we're kind of assembling a list. And we're going to be probably coming out there pretty quickly and start knocking on doors and asking people, would you conform to city ordinance and repair this or do this? Hopefully, most will respond, but if they don't, I guess one of the steps may be that we'll have to bring, Scott will have to come down here with a list some night and say, okay, we got seven properties in town, one in each ward, and this is where it's at. And then maybe suggest that all of you go out and look at these and tell us what you think. Should we go after these people? I mean, we do have some court power that we could interject here. I don't think we necessarily want to use it. We'd just like to just ask for voluntary compliance. But there are folks that seemingly don't want to do that. And so we're, I just share this with you as a conversation that will probably be coming up for the next, at least over the summer months where we'll have this going on. And I guess what I'd really like to ask is, and I think some of you have already talked to me, that you know of something in your ward where there is a problem. And if you could, you know, get to me the address or whatever have you so we can get it on the list and let everybody involved in it say that we're not trying to bring anybody in and put them in the newspaper or anything else as much as we're just trying to get quiet voluntary compliance with junk sitting around or broken porches or whatever the issues may be. And unfortunately, we've got a handful of properties in town that aren't. So Alderman Uer, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'm wondering if this is an opportunity, I mean, obviously, the last couple years have been troubling. And we did a lot of work in the first year of COVID to support our restaurants. We sided with Batavia, and the community came together, and our restaurants all made it through it. And I wonder if this is a similar situation, that these are people that are just in a situation that I'm going to choose between food and my garage door opener? I'm picking food.
Right.
And I just wonder if it's something that we could try and rally the community around for people that are in that situation rather than kind of take the...
I think you've got a very good idea there. I'm not arguing at all with it. I mean, I think what we need to do is get together the list, if you will, of where these are at because they're out there. And, you know, then, okay, let's adopt, let's go talk to you philosophy and say, can we help you? Can you do something yourself? We'd like to get this corrected because, you know, you're the only house on your street that doesn't have a front, a floor on their porch or whatever the issue may be. So, yeah, I think we, we're not looking to come in and slam bang anybody as much as try to get everything looking as supportive and usable and safe as it possibly can be.
Your Honor, I'd also like to second what Alderman Uer said, that, you know, I'd really like to have Community Development and Code Enforcement do their job first, find out, identify those, and then the ones that aren't compliant or can't comply, find out if, you know, we can find out some of the reasons why, and if there's a way that we can set up with, whether it's community groups or, you know, there's a lot of groups that could help with that. I know that the churches and the Boy Scout groups and others have historically been able to help some of those people. And I think that that's really something we should do as, I think, our next step on that. I don't want to cite anybody or, you know, force anybody into a court proceeding or anything without trying to get some help for them, especially somebody that can't, can't do that or doesn't have the means to do that. So I think that really needs to be our second step after Community Development and Inspection Does Their Job.
They actually do.
Right.
We have a couple of incredibly compassionate individuals in Justin Howe and Tim Osterman. You know, we don't share a lot of the stories that come our way about what the department does for individuals who do need that extra care. But I know they have done so much when they find someone who, the reason they're in this situation is not because of, you know, the, a lack of, they're not lazy, it's they can't kind of care for themselves. And so oftentimes, they've gone into people's homes to help them clean up situations or reached out to organizations within our community who can provide the services that those individuals need. So we really do.
And that's something I want to make sure that happens, and I think we'd get, you know, support from our community in other ways that maybe we haven't asked for before to try to make sure that, you know, we do help our own people in our community that can't do this stuff.
Absolutely. We always try to connect them with resources.
Well, thank you for picking up my comments because this is exactly where I wanted this to go, that I needed, I think we need to publicly state this at the City Council meeting that, hey, we're out there looking, we're trying to help people, we're trying to correct some of these things in the best way possible and not lean heavily on anybody as much as just get it back into the shape it should be. And the staff is already well on their way to figure out what has been going on and is not going on and doing it, so.
See, Abby's got her hand up and wanted to say something.
Abby, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out one resource that's out there. I've brought up Community Contacts in the past. They provide the lie heath and the weatherization programs for King County. They also have a housing rehabilitation program where they do a lot of the work that we're talking about on either a grant basis or a no interest loan for the homeowner if they qualify. The income qualifications are on their website. If you go to cci-echci.org and go to Home Rehab, it lays out the income, the income requirements, but they do a lot of those, a lot of these fixes that we're talking about for, for folks. So that's one resource we can share when we hear about them.
Now, Scott Buneen, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, you know, we do try to, you know, work with people as best as we can. And, you know, before COVID, there were a lot more resources for, for folks. We used to have a lot of church groups and some others that would help and be able to pitch in to, you know, fix people's homes, go on a weekend type of thing, and, you know, fix their siding or the gutters or what have you. So unfortunately with COVID, it's, you know, some of that, some of those resources have dropped off. But we do try to, you know, work with people. I mean, our first goal isn't to come down with a hammer and, and find people and take them to court and things like that. We do try to work with them and see what their particular circumstances are. Like Laura said, Tim and Justin have been a great resource for our department as well as the individuals that are having, you know, some trouble maintaining their properties and trying to, you know, get their properties in better shape. That said, there are some that are, we'll call frequent flyers, that are, you know, people that own maybe a number of properties that are not maintaining their properties as they should and they can. Those are the ones that, you know, we're really targeting, you know, with more specific enforcement on because we know that they have some ability to do things. But when you have the individuals that, you know, just don't have abilities or capabilities to maintain their properties, that's when we certainly turn the compassion level up and really try and work with them to, you know, try and see what we can do to help them out.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments? I just wanted you all to be aware that we are moving along on this and we're trying to get some stuff going. I guess the final thing, one other thing I just wanted to share, we had an opportunity yesterday on Sunday, the Batavia Fire Department hosted a meeting of the, I'll call it the canteen group. There is a group of, I'll call them clubs in parts of the Chicago Line region. I had some folks here from Rockford, we had some folks from Will County, we had some people from South Suburbs, we had a couple guys from Cicero, Berwyn area. And they all meet about four or five times a year, and they ask, a fire station someplace in the area, will you host us for a meeting and let us talk about the latest experiences? Well, the boys have had a lot of experience this year between the fire up in Bartlett and the Rockton explosion and that chemical plant they had up there and everything else. So they asked if they could come to Batavia, and I think one of the reasons is, is that we're kind of centrally located in this bigger area. Chief Hanson came in and spent the, oh, I think, the whole time at the meeting with them. I went and talked for a few minutes and told some Batavia fire stories that they, I think, got a kick out of. They're, they're all kind of fire buffs in one way or another. But they were, it was over with, they were extremely complimentary and appreciative to me about the friendliness of the Batavia Fire Department and the supportive spirit that they had and everything else. And they couldn't say enough about what they were seeing here and how well it was being all managed and run as a community for specifically, if there is a major emergency, we've already got it all pre-planned as to who comes and who does what. As many of you know, we had this rather large fire in a paper shredding factory up in Bartlett a couple weeks ago that went on for 10, 12 days. And at the end of the day, they, they've designed this service or the support facility. When something like this happens, they, they have this MABUS system. And so I think Batavia went up there maybe twice with our ladder truck, put the ladder up, and all you could do was just dump water on this pile of paper that just kept burning and burning and burning and burning. And then we'd stay for 10, 12 hours, take the ladder down and leave, somebody else would come in and put the ladder up and do it. So I think it's really, says something for the area that when somebody has a major incident like this, that everybody shows up and shows support. And I'm also thinking it was very nice that we could host a meeting of this group yesterday in Batavia and let them all talk about it and understand it, what went right, what went wrong. And then also have a, you know, a better understanding that there are supportive systems like city governments that when you're out there doing something, you're not being paid anything for this, you're just there volunteering your time and effort, that, you know, making the coffee and getting doughnuts and giving to the firemen and policemen or at an emergency scene for extended periods of time. It really speaks well for the region that we live in that we, we have this. And I was very proud yesterday that Batavia could serve as a facility for them to hold their meeting at because they thought we were pretty good. So I appreciate the good stuff, things I heard yesterday about us. And, you know, it's a joint thing, it's everybody, all the fire departments around are all participating in this. But it's good that we could have a key role yesterday and help spread the news about what went right and what went wrong in all these situations. They could all sit there and pull out their pictures and share their notes of what they saw, what went wrong, and the whole bit. So it's just a good communication and makes us a stronger region. So thank Chief Hanson and his staff for they all, firemen, everybody was all there and everybody, you know, helped show the station off and do all the good stuff that needed to be done. So it was a really nice moment in this year of the Batavia Fire Department, so.
All right, that's all I have to say. I guess I would entertain a motion. We're not going to have an executive session tonight, so somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah. Court take a voice vote on that one, I guess?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.